It is now six thirty. Daryl's gonna hold up his hat, and I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Remain standing. Please remain standing. I'm gonna frame over us here tonight. Father, we ask for your wisdom and your presence here tonight. We ask for your mercy to rain down on us, Lord, as we seek to work together, Lord, as we seek to find solutions that are consistent with your principles of freedom and liberty and personal property and self-governance. Lord, we pray that you would minister to every heart here, Lord, that you would guide our minds and our thoughts, that you would guide our words, and, Lord, that we would complete this tonight with a sense of community, unity, that solves the problem, one problem that we have before us, and we ask for it in Jesus' name. Amen. All right. Thank you very much. Okay. Thank you, Lord, for being here. I gotta say, I'm very impressed with the attendance here tonight. Wish we could get this at board commissioner meetings, but I understand those are at nine thirty in the morning, and that's a little tougher. Were you working? Yeah, I understand it. I get it. I work too, so, yeah, I get it. So, we have an issue before us here that's come up, and it's been problematic. And the goal here tonight is to come up with a framework of solutions that's agreeable to every person in this room. That's the goal, and I'd like to get there. The way we're gonna get there is by creatively addressing the issues that exist around this problem of structures in the right-of-way. And so, there are some creative ideas, and we're really looking forward to fleshing those out. I do want to address a few things that I have heard repeatedly. There's been a lot of bad information that has gotten out there. There's bad information like, "They're taking our property." There's bad information like, "They scheduled the town hall on college football championship night in order to keep people away." I mean, it came. I'm serious. That's why we're having it tonight rather than when it was originally scheduled, because of the number of complaints like that. So, you know, I apologize for that shift that we had to make, but that's what we wanted to do, to make sure that everybody's concerns got satisfied, or as many as possible. So, tonight, what we're gonna do is we're going to open up with some words from Public Works Director Paul Slater. He's going to kind of give some history, frame what the issue is and how it developed, and give us some details about things that have happened and have not happened, lay out some accurate information, and I would like for Paul to be able to get through what he has to say without interjections, without objections, without comments. If you have comments or questions, please wait until he's done, and then we'll have an opportunity to address some questions. And if you have a question and want to speak, that's what this microphone right here is for. So, and we would like to limit each person's comments. I mean, there's a lot of us here. Obviously, everybody is not gonna have time to speak, or we'll be here until next week. So, I'd like to, if you hear somebody raising an issue that you wanted to raise, just let it be, because every comment is very important to us, and we're taking this very seriously. You all out here are our employers, okay? And we're acting on your behalf and looking for the best interest for all of you and everybody else in the county, to the best of our ability. And, you know, sometimes things don't go exactly the way that some of us think they should, and when they don't, then, you know what? We'll back up, reassess, and evaluate, and make a better plan. So, thank you for your mercy and your grace on that, and without further ado, I'll turn it over to Paul Slater.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Paul Slater, the Public Works Director for Coos County. I've been in the position since August of 2022. Can't hear me?
No. We can't see you.
Sure, sure, sure. Okay. I brought a bunch of notes here that I'll share with you guys. So, I've lived in Coos County since 96. My wife was born and raised here. I've lived on a county road since 96, and I worked with or for Coos County in different capacities since 1997, so I've been around for a little while. If you turn around the county's road system, you noted a number of places with garbage, RVs, utility trailers, vehicles, et cetera, parked or abandoned next to the road. Some of these have been there for years. My predecessors worked on cleaning up the right-aways, especially my most recent predecessor. This includes removal of abandoned parked vehicles, RVs, trailers, et cetera. We've continued that, to make a concerted effort to continue to clean up our right-ways. We've been working with county compliance and land specialists to clean up some of these spots. Cleaning up these publicly dedicated right-ways includes dealing with structures in the right-of-way, such as utility holes, pedestals for foms, boulders, mailboxes, signs, fences, trees, those kinds of things. State law requires that public utilities be able to install their lines in public right-ways. My predecessors have not taken an active role in where utilities place their impertinences. I am and will continue to do that. We want to make sure public utilities are placed in areas that are gonna be at least more of a least impact to our maintenance. We've also started conversations with public utilities about them maintaining their own facilities within our right-ways. The county has historically been pretty lax with regulation and enforcement on county roads. In the early 2000s, if a person completed work before the county noticed, it was simply brushed off as, dang, missed out. If a person was observed working on, or they called in and asked for permission, or requested guidance from the county on working in the right-of-way, they were made to get a permit. From 2010 to 2022, during John Rose tenure, obtaining a permit to work in the right-of-way was regulated and enforced. Any fence was required to be minimum of seven feet from the edge of the travel surface, and it was only done by permit. John also had people move their fences back when they were not in compliance with that policy. Permits to work in the right-of-way have been required since 1991, according to the Coos County ordinance, which was first adopted by the Board of Commissioners in 91. Counties may issue permits for fencing in the right-of-way since at least 1991. And I'm gonna focus mostly talking about fences. I think that's primarily the reason why everybody's here. There are a number of other structures and items in the right-of-way that we'll not get into too much here tonight. However, the vast majority of existing fencing along county right-ways are unpermitted. Working around structures, especially fences, takes the road department four to five times as long to cut or mow a section of road, sorry, as opposed to without fencing, which consequently raises the cost four to five times to the taxpayer. This is assuming the machine doesn't hit the fence and wrap wire in the cutter head. Just removing wire from the cutter head takes from a few hours to up to all day sometimes, depending on the severity. Additionally, hitting fences can cause a cutter head seal or bearing failure resulting in the machine having to be brought back to the shop or repaired. This not only results in two or more days of downtime, as well as the cost of repairs. A single bearing in these cutter heads runs on average around $300. So, and it's usually more than that, of course, when you add in other materials and shop time, and also the downtime. One of the tools in our toolbox for vegetation control is herbicides. In Oregon, the label is the law. We cannot spray beyond a fence. This limits the ability to control vegetation to a point where we don't have to brush, cut, or mow as often. It currently takes us between three and five years to cut each section of road that we have in our system. I'm trying to shorten that time to improve our road safety for everyone. So, I met with the board back in January of 2023 at an open public work session meeting to discuss this issue before putting the current policy in place. I met with them a second time in April of '23 to discuss the topic again and get the policy confirmed. We have been and will continue to install signage on each of our roads that we maintain showing the end of maintenance, in some cases, the beginning of our maintenance. Additionally, we've installed signs out on the beginning of roads, which I'm sure a lot of you have seen already.
That would be great if you did it. Wake it down.
On those signs that we're putting at the beginning of the roads, it'll, you know, it says it's a county-maintained road, gives you the width of the right-of-way, and a reminder to call before completing any work. This'll take some time to get all these signs out there, because we do have a lot of roads and we have limited resources. So, our current policy right now is no new private structures, including fencing, in the county right-ways, and that includes county-maintained roads and what's called local access roads, which are public roads that are not maintained by the county, but they're outside the city limits, and so they're under county jurisdiction. If we notice work being done in the right-of-way and the person or persons are present, we usually stop and try to discuss it with them right there on the site. If they're not present, we'll research adjacent property ownership, check right-of-way with, based on our road files and state plat maps, and sometimes checking with the county surveyor's office, and then try to call the adjacent property owner if we're able to come up with a phone number for him. If we can't, then we usually send out a stop work order to the listed property owner that's adjacent to that section of road. The stop work order lays out what the alleged violation is and how to rectify the violation. Normally, people call us, and we'll explain the ordinance and the policy, and usually we get voluntary compliance. Sometimes compliance includes the road department having the county surveyor survey the road and identify the edge of the right-of-way, so that people know where they can build. In two rare instances, we've had to issue a citation and summons to the property owner and/or person performing the work and send the case to the county hearings officer. We're not doing enforcement on existing unpermitted fencing. We're asking people to move fences when they are doing substantial repairs or replacement in an existing fence. There will likely be some sections of road in the near future where we'll be contacting adjacent landowners to discuss moving sections of fence back away from road further where there's a safety or maintenance issue. To date, like I said, we've issued two citations for fencing in the right-of-way, and that's since August of '22. We issued one other citation for a person working in a local access road that was digging a ditch down the road. Those are the only three citations we've actually issued to date. We're currently holding on any new fencing-related citations until after that, the January 23rd work session. Another question that came up was, we had a county road maintenance list on our road department website until recently. I had staff remove that due to many noticed errors on the list. There were errors such as functional class, surface type, right-of-way width, and a couple other things. I plan on having someone research the road cases and surveys, et cetera, that have been done to date to confirm information before we put that list back up on the website. We do still have the county road system app on our road department page. There have been, some of these, Rod, I already kind of mentioned, there's been questions about the counties taking people's private land. We're not doing that. There have been concerns raised about the county changing the widths or the locations of right-ways. We haven't done that, and we're not doing that. If we're proposing to change a right-of-way, there will be a public process, as laid out in Oregon-advised statute 368. The county-maintained and local access road right-ways are public right-ways dedicated to public use. We're simply trying to manage these right-ways in the most efficient or cost-effective way possible, and use the public's money to get the most done with what we have to work with. I believe this includes, where possible, moving structures like fences out of the right-of-way to make it work easier, thereby saving time and money, and making the right-of-way safer. If anyone from the public has questions or concerns about anything road-related, we have an open-door policy. We're open Monday through Thursday, 7 to 5:30. Feel free to come by. We're usually pretty busy, so it's better if you can call and set up a specific time. And I'd be glad to assure my email, cellphone, or my office phone with anybody who's interested in having a conversation. That's all I have.
Thank you, Paul. Commissioner Sweet would like to say some words.
I don't have a lot to say that I could add to what Paul just said. You know, we only have so many hours a year of manpower that we can afford. We have, I think now, 28 people in our road department? It used to have 59. And if we waste any of those hours unwinding wire from a cutter head, that means there's just that many hours of brushing we won't get done. As Paul said, right now, with all the delays we get, we're lucky to get around the road system once every two or three years, three to five years, and that's not enough brushing. We don't have a budget for more men or more women, so we have to work efficiently if we're going to get the roads brushed in adequate, you know, on a regular basis. Now, why do we brush? Several reasons. Don't brush just for the fun of it. It's not fun to work. It's expensive. It takes expensive equipment, and we've got plenty of other things we could be doing. But if you don't brush, the line of vision in the roads gets closed off. You've got some very serious safety issues. If you don't brush, you can't repair your ditches. I know in the years past, we've had road masters who concentrate on other things besides ditch maintenance, in my view, and I hope in most of your views. If you don't maintain your ditches, you don't add drainage, the roads get wet and soggy, they fail. So, this is a necessary part of maintaining ditches, providing safe vision, line of vision. So, remember, we're not doing this just to be doing it. There's good reason for it, and we just hope that we can get it done as efficiently as possible. Again, we only have so many man-hours a year to work. If it takes twice as long to brush the roads as it should, that means there's less grading, less gravel spreading, less problems. Get fixed. It's a choice. So, that was all I had to add.
Thank you, John. So, the road system is the most, in monetary terms, the most valuable asset that we have in the county, and it's critical to transportation, which is important to all of us. I think we would all agree with that. And, you know, unfortunately, the budgetary constraints that we're working under at the county are tremendous. We're, we are facing, in this coming budget year, we're facing a possible $4 to $5 million deficit or shortfall in what we need to just maintain the bare minimum services that we're able to run right now. As the, as a commissioner who's only been in office for one year, when I came in and started seeing what's happening in the employ of the county, and I'm talking about all the people who work for the county and what they're doing, I was surprised, actually. I was surprised at the efficiency, the work ethic, the amount of stuff that everybody is getting done, and how much it weighs on everybody to be as productive as they can in their roles. So, it's not a matter of inefficiency of the people, it's a matter of the shortfall of money. You know, we've got, we've got monies that we're supposed to be getting from forest lands, the ONC forest lands, the wagon road lands, that used to augment the budget of the county to such a degree that we have one of the lowest tax rates in the state. I think we're the, I think we're the second or the third, extremely low. What the county actually receives from the property tax bill that we all pay is $1.08 per thousand, $1.08. So, what we actually, what we actually get to operate the county into the general fund, which the roads is not in the general fund, but just to give you a picture of how we're running altogether, we only get about $6 million, just a little over $6 million a year from all of our property taxes. That's it. All the rest of it goes to the special taxing districts, your fire district, your schools, ambulance, you know, whatever is a special district, there's 37 of them in the county, and that's where the bulk of that money goes.
Deveraux, then?
So... Yeah, so, you know what? I'll speak to that for just a moment, please. Because everybody, I've heard, I've heard repetitively, "Oh, you guys, you guys don't have enough money to run the general fund departments. Well, why'd you give that, why'd you vote for $67,000 to rent pallet houses at Deveraux?" Well, I'll tell you why. The health and wellness monies have, we have, we have no right, we have no legal capacity, no legal ability to utilize those health and wellness funds for anything else. Those funds are all program and grant monies that are, that we're bound by law and by intergovernmental agreements that the county's made in the past to use those funds for its health and wellness. If we were to, if we were to be able to get the, all the commissioners and the treasurer on board with taking health and wellness money and using it for something else, you know what would happen?
Go to jail.
We'd all be arrested. Yeah, I mean, we can't do it.
How do they get away with hitting others?
So, that's, that's the reality, is, you know, that vote, I've got a lot, we've got a lot of feedback on that, but those monies are not usable for general fund, or for roads, or for anything else.
How do they get away with hitting others?
So, and we're not gonna, we're not gonna address questions that are popping up other than this one, okay? That was it. But if you have another question, then you can, you can bring it up to the microphone when we open it up to that. I'd like to address, before, before we go into questions, because I think this will help to streamline the process, I'd like to spend a few minutes discussing some ideas that we've had to resolve this issue in a way that's palatable and agreeable to everybody, because the fact of the matter is, you know, we're all neighbors. We don't, we don't want to impinge on your rights, okay? We don't. We are, every single one of us here is gravely concerned about your constitutional rights, your property rights, and maintaining the best possible relationship as we seek to serve you as your government that you've elected us. And our goal and our desire is to serve you all, and when we do that, unfortunately, we can't make everybody happy, but certainly, our property owners, our agricultural sector, you know, you people out here, you're all the salt of the, salt of the earth, salt of the county. And, you know, we don't, we don't want to create an adversarial relationship.
Spend the money on the Deveraux, then, and then...
Yeah, we don't want to create an adversarial relationship. We don't want, and if, you know, and unfortunately, some people can't, you know, can't be agreeable to have a discussion, but I hope that, I hope that most of us are. Anyway, we've got some potential ideas, and before I go into framing those, what I want to say about the way the roads are maintained, the road shoulders and that mowing along the edges and along the fences, is that, you know, as you've heard, we don't have the resources to get around to every, every road shoulder every year. We just don't. It's not possible. So, we're doing the best that we can with what we have available to us, and there simply isn't more. So, in order to create a successful environment where we all can have well-maintained, well-managed road system in this county, it's going to require some partnership participation. And so, the reality is that, you know, mowerhead cannot efficiently mow where there's not enough room off the edge of the pavement to mow. And that, that line used to be permitted at seven feet off the pavement, which frankly is not enough room for them to run those mowerheads efficiently.
It's got a four-foot...
They've got to have a little bit more room than that, and that doesn't exist. There are places where the fence is, you know, three feet, four feet, places where it's two feet. There's places on Catching Slough where the fence, where there's fence posts right almost at the edge of the pavement, and that is true also on bearing, where we live. So, you know, and I've got a fence that's, that's inside what the right-of-way is. I didn't put the fence there, and, you know, this, I mean, we're gonna have to deal with that ourselves. So, and Paul has one too. I mean, you know, this is an issue that touches us all. So, what we're proposing, what I'm proposing, is that with an approach of partnership and collaboration and agreeable embrace of this situation, you know, it's not necessarily the case that we have to have all fences removed from the right-of-way. That's, that's not the case at all. What we're saying is, if you're building a new fence, it does need to be outside the right-of-way. If, if, you know, I'm sorry, if you've got a comment, or we're, I'm gonna open this mic up in just a minute.
I'm not supposed to go to the mic.
So, my objective, as I just stated a minute ago, was that I wanted to frame this out a little bit, so that...
You've already framed it out. Let us talk.
Amen.
I have not, I have not told you what the, what I'm thinking of as a, as a possible way to solve this. So, if you want to be contentious and slow the meeting down, that's your option. If you want to hear what I have to say, and then I'll comment, so that your comments are pertinent to everything that we have to say, then that's, I think, more productive. So, what we're saying is that if you've got, if you've got a fence that's, that's inside that right-of-way, and it's not causing an urgent problem, then it probably doesn't need to be moved, okay? If you've got a repair that needs, a major repair that needs to happen to a section of fence that's within the right-of-way, then we'd like it moved out of the right-of-way while you're doing it. And I've heard that, I've heard this thing, "Well, that's taking my land." I'm sorry, but that's not true.
But it is.
The fact of the matter is, the fact of the matter is that the right-of-way, as established, as established in surveys and in the records, isn't, it's not my land. It's not. It's the right-of-way. So, you know, it's, it's very distinct. Paul, is there, is there anything else you'd like to address about how the policy can work going forward?
I mean, there's... I think there's definitely room to, you know, have a conversation on how, in an ideal world, fences would be at the edge of the right-of-way. That would be the best for the road department and the ability to do road maintenance. I mean, it just would. However, there, there's a lot of fences out there, as I said, I mean, literally hundreds of miles of fence along the county road system. And so, you know, we know we're gonna have to work around this for a long time anyway. We're just trying to avoid dealing with more of it that we're already having to work around. I'm sure that there's ways that we could come up with some, some kind of middle ground that's workable for both the road department getting our maintenance done, as well as adjacent landowners. So, I mean, I'll kind of wait and see what people have to suggest.
Okay, so, I'd like to go ahead and open up this mic. Okay, so I'd like to go ahead and open up this mic. If you'd like to speak, please, please get up here, and we really wanna limit the, let's be respectful of everybody's time, and we're gonna try to keep it to three minutes apiece. And thank you very much. Okay. Oh, yeah, turn it on, there's a switch. Switch right between the bracket.
Hello? Okay. I'm Vanessa Rains, I'm from Merrill Point. Me and my husband raise a bunch of cattle, and we've got forested land, too, lots of fence, cows get out, always repairing. So my idea, we have a flailer on our, our tractor, or actually our skid steer, and I don't know what kind of equipment you're running, I know you've got some newer equipment for flailing, I, I saw your budget on that. But what if everyone just colored the top of their post orange, or something of that nature, so we have a hazard for the mowers? I mean, we just had a county mower come through on Reed'sford Road, and he grazed the boards on the, on top of our fence, that wooden fence with, with the four-inch square wire on it. So that's what I would suggest, is maybe have, put it on the landowners, not necessarily to, to mark their, their properties, just like the spraying and all that kind of stuff, if they can mark the top so that, so it's visible for when the mowers come through, they know they need to back off on their flalers. It's not, it, you know, I know they have a certain reach, but you can always come back closer to the middle line to, to, to do your rowing. Thank you.
It's a good idea, thank you, Vanessa. I'm Mark.
Hi, my name is Mark Kane. I'm a landowner on the North Bank Lane. And one thing I'm picking up from you guys on the panel here is, it's all about money and time. And I think a good remedy would be for you guys to work with us, the landowners, and when we have property lines, fences that are shot, and we want to put new fences in, let us put up new fences, and then mow the grass in between, you know. If you, if you went thirty feet from the middle of the road to my property, there's a lot of land that are to clear. You can't do it. You already said you don't have the manpower. So why not use the landowners as a tool and work with us? Tell, we're gonna tell Paul, "Hey, Paul, I got a hundred yards here I wanna clear. I'm gonna mow it, this is how I wanna do it, it's gonna take this amount of time." And that time is money, for, you know, our time costs money. So why don't you give us a tax deduction of some sort to do that?
Absolutely. We're already doing our own maintenance anyway.
Yeah, we're doing it anyway, and they don't have the time, so let us help and work with you, but give us an incentive that allows us to write some tax money on. So that's all I have to say.
I'm Harold Smith. This is a dressing here. I'm in road district. You guys don't come, you don't do nothing for us, except be a pain. I mean, from the siding to, if you wet what a culvert did, we've been doing it enough years, we don't want to do it. We take care of the road now. We do the, we do the cutting and everything else. And there are some fences that are close to the line. But there's a lot of our line, I'd like to see you dress this too. Some of our landowners are down Baker Road, they own to the middle of the road. Because Baker Road is unique in a lot of ways, is how it was established. But some of my interest is, not road maintenance, what we do, why can't we lease from the county or ask your building owner to use the grader on our property, on our, our road? How about, when we, we need some safety barriers. We'd like to buy from you, but the road mess said they don't have it available, okay? Well, if you don't have it available, you must be buying from someplace, maybe we can get the discount. Say what, we buy, we have to buy the signs because the road mess has been tapped under Oregon State rules, that crap, you have to be whatever it's on, county laws. But there's all kinds of, like, buying, all of us, for example, herbicides. We should be able to go together and buy quantity of herbicides at a discount, and then pay whatever that, whatever it's worth. But you guys make some money off of us. I mean, we're happy to go to the private sector. Instead of going to the private sector, why not come to you guys? I don't know, I don't know how many dedicated roads there are in here. Maybe I'm the only one. Or I'm the one on the road. But isn't that fun, right? That we should be able to purchase from you, or allow us to use a discount, but there's no reason for us to go to the private sector. Now, you are living on labor, you got, you're living, I gather that. But there are some things that should be helped with the road districts. And I don't, we're already, you know, personally, we've acted, running my mower down the road, you know, to get blackberries back, you know, be higher, ready to market, come and brush out. So I think there's things that need to be done. If guys wanna work on their own road, get it cleaned back, so you guys, you know, why not let them?
Maybe you're the only one that doesn't know, but when you have a private sector program, you sign up and hit roughly twenty-five, fifty percent market cost.
That'd be great. I didn't, I wasn't aware, but I'm sorry.
You're probably the only one here.
I didn't know that, I had no idea.
No, I know, I was, I'm on gravel, so we got on the board, not on the board. Oh, yeah.
I'm Dawn Handeck. I live on gravel Ford Lane. Now, it's a little gravel road running between Lee Valley Road and I think it's now Fairview Road. I'm old, okay? Those were not the days when I was a kid. So this little gravel road's about fourteen feet wide, and it has a sixty-foot right of way. I didn't know that when I repaired the old fence after my parents passed and I moved out there. But I got a citation, so I went to the website and I looked really hard to try to find what exactly that right of way was. And it's kind of interesting, because my husband went, talked to people at the road department, one of them told him, "Oh, no, that should be a twenty-foot right of way." Someone else told him, "I, might be a forty foot." Now, while, while we were building that fence, somebody stopped by in a road department truck and said how nice it looked, since we had cleaned up the blackberries and cleared everything and straightened up that old fence. They didn't say a word about right of ways. It wasn't until long after we had built over half a mile of fence, my husband and I, that we got that citation to cease and desist. Now, my question is, you cite man hours, and you cite budgetary concerns, and I understand that, but you already have the framework to save money, actually, to garner income, and to appease your landowners. You mentioned the permitting process. I believe that's a hundred and thirty dollars for the first year and something like thirty-five for ensuing years, I'm not positive on that. You mentioned the no-spray process, and I did check into that. So when a farmer signs up for the no-spray agreement, that farmer is agreeing to maintain the side of the road, because they are hindering the road department's ability to do so. So why, for goodness sakes, do you not simply have a waiver and a contract within your permitting process? I will pay you to not take down a half a mile of bloody fence. Happy? Thank you.
My name is Anthony Romano, I'm a parolee on Sycamore County, and I'm an attorney. I represented Dow Canyon connection with his citation that he received on North Fork
Lane. I think we need to be a little more candid about what has happened here. Now, I will say I want to compliment Mr. Slater and Mr. Tomlin, the county council, that they met with me last week to talk about some of this stuff. But I found out some things that I think people need to know here tonight. One of those is, if the road department, this is going backwards, if the road department wants to enforce these right of ways or deal with structures that are allegedly interfering with their ability to do their work, then they need to actually do it in that way. The citation that was issued to Mr. King, that corner on North Fork Lane, Mr. Slater admitted to me in our meeting, that fence was not interfering with any work that was ever contemplated to be done. It's a, an oddball curve where you couldn't get a piece of machinery anyway. There was no, there was no issue there with actual work being interfered with. And Mr. Slater confirmed the county doesn't have a schedule or a plan for road maintenance, it's something that he's working on, to his credit. But I think before you think at all about rights of way, that schedule and plan has to be done first. You talked about safety for visibility, getting blackberries cut down, a brush cut down, so people can see around problem curves. How about we identify where those curves are, and we create a priority, right? This particular curve on this particular road presents a safety hazard if the brush is not cut, and there's a fence that's interfering with us cutting that brush? Well, that should go to the top of the list. And then talk to that landowner. I think most folks in here would agree, I know I would, I would rather pay a third party to do work on my land than move my fence back one millimeter for the county.
Yes.
I would say more money to have that work done and keep my fence where it is than it would cost me to move that fence backwards, because I worked really hard to buy that land, and every inch of it matters to me.
Every inch.
The other thing that I think the county is not being candid about is this list of what these rights of way are. I haven't, I'll admit, I haven't dug deep into it yet, but I have dug into it a little bit. And the question of what these rights, rights of way are, on what roads, is one that is far from clear. I spoke to the county surveyor, and they told me most of the roads in the county have never been surveyed for the right of way, okay? We had a list that was published on the county website that was referenced by Mr. Slater. Now, it's very easy to brush off this list and say, "Well, there were errors, there were mistakes we have to correct." Well, some county employee created that list and believed it was correct when it was published. And I haven't seen all of the changes that the county is making to that list, by the way, changes that are being made behind closed doors without notice to any of you who may be affected by it.
It's bullshit.
But if I had to have it a guess, I would guess that there's not a single right of way that's being reduced. I guarantee you they're being increased, and I know when it is. That list was published, and by the way, I have a copy of that list, I printed it before they took it down. Anybody who wants it, I'll give you a copy. North Fork Lane was published on that list as having a forty-foot right of way. Mr. King was cited for violating a sixty-foot right of way, and the road department put up a sign that says the right of way there is sixty feet. I've said this before publicly, and I'll say it again, if the county doesn't know what the right of way is, how can you enforce that against the people in this room? Is it forty or is it sixty? And what you guys are saying is, "Well, forty was a mistake, sixty is the real number." Well, how do we know that? And most importantly, there are property owners, some of whom may be in this room, who own property on North Fork Lane, who a year ago, the county published that your right of way was forty. Now, they put up a sign that said it's sixty, with no notice to you. So you are increasing the right of way, and you are carving away people's property rights when you do that. This is the United States of America. People are entitled to due process before you take their property. Notice and an opportunity to be heard. This list is being amended, corrected, and changed behind closed doors with no opportunity to be heard by those property owners who are being affected. That is wrong, and that is illegal, and it should stop, and it should stop right now.
Yeah!
That list needs to be put back on the website tomorrow, and it needs to remain there, and if changes are gonna be made to it, those changes need to be shown publicly, and the public needs to have a right to comment on whether or not those changes are accurate. Because some prior county employee, by what we've heard tonight, made mistakes on those lists. So how do we know that the current county employees are not making mistakes on that revised list? And these are people's property rights at stake, and that matters. So I think this list is not a small issue. So again, I think actually common sense solves the whole issue. I think this whole thing is a problem looking for a solution, frankly, I mean, a solution looking for a problem. What you have here is a situation where all the county has to do is identify where do they need to do maintenance, where somebody's fence or other structure is impeding the ability to do maintenance, and then deal with that landowner. You can work at it, deal with that landowner probably, like I said. If it's me, if it's me, I'm either gonna do the work myself, or I'm gonna pay a private contractor to do it before I move my fence. The county should be satisfied with that as long as the work gets done. But why are we having a citation issued on a corner or a curve on a road that has no priority to anyone, and there's no work that needs to be done there? Instead of prioritizing where work needs to be done? And if you have a corner that's a safety issue, or a curve that's a safety issue, and you need to cut brush down, and the landowner won't cooperate, the landowner either won't do it themselves, or they won't move the fence, or they won't cooperate somewhere or another, well, you know, go ahead and cite that guy, he had his chance. But we should have the opportunity to decide whether or not we're gonna move our fence, or whether or not we're gonna do the work to the county's satisfaction to ourselves, and we have a right to expect that the road department is gonna approach this problem in a way that reflects the priority of the need. What are the roads and locations that most need maintenance? What are the ones that most need to be addressed? The plan has to come before the enforcement comes. Because once you have that plan, you can then have that conversation with the landowner, "Hey, we need to get this brush cut down on your road for this reason, and your fence is in our way. What do you want to do about it?" And then you can work a solution to that problem. Instead, what happened is, this just absolute, this, "We have this right of way, it's all right, we're not gonna talk about it, we're just gonna enforce it." So let's come up with priorities, and let's talk to each other, and let's do a little bit of sunshine on what's actually happening, on how the county has been finding these rights of ways. I, I sent a Freedom of Information Act request, Oregon State Public Records Act request, to the county last week, because I want to get the records and relate to this right of way. I want to see what's been surveyed, I want to see what's been done, and I'm more than happy to share that information with anybody in the community as I get it, just feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
I live on a county dedicated road that you don't maintain. You don't work on it, you don't loan this equipment, you don't put rock on it, you don't do anything. Is there a reason that it's still a county road so every looky-loo and every deer hunter that wants to shoot a deer out of somebody's field drives up and down and sprays the rock that we buy off our road, instead of letting us put a private road sign down at the end of it? And not get our fences kept by deer hunters, and not get shit trampled by turkey hunters? Is it just hold this under your thumb, lording power over somebody? Turn the road loose, give it back, make it a private road. We don't need all that traffic. We don't need the trouble with it. And my deed does say I own to the middle of the road, so it is taking of property. I don't mind the road going through there, it's kind of a pain at times, but I'm losing a whole bunch more on the sides of that. It's a one, it's a dead-end road that goes nowhere, provides access to nothing but people's houses. It's not a through road, it doesn't even hit an old tie road that goes anywhere. Why can't we have it back? Baker Road, Hilltop Lane, Rainbow Lane, they're all right there. Why can't we just have it back? We're already paying taxes, the road district thing that you guys have set up where you take money out of everybody's taxes, that's magical. It is, that's wonderful. But we want a private road sign. If you don't live up here, you don't belong up here, go somewhere else. People bring their dogs out to walk in the road and do their business everywhere, and it's just an old county road, so there ain't no business, nobody cleaning it up, nothing. We deal with it all the time.
Don't forget about the trash, Terry.
Yeah, the garbage. People that live there probably into us throwing it out. Give us our road back.
We'll bring you the refrigerators.
And as far as- I just want to speak to that for a moment, because, you know, there is a process that we can easily go through to vacate a road- that we can easily go through to vacate a road like that. It's going to take an agreement of the property owners along the road. But we vacate road accesses all the time. So, you know, that's easily doable. But we're not going, we don't just know, you know, what you need. If you need the road vacated, you know, absolutely.
Well, if you're not going to maintain anything, turn it loose. What's the point? If you're not going to do anything with the road and the road doesn't go anywhere, why do you have to have control of it? When you don't do anything for it?
So the reason for public access roads is when you don't have an agreement among the neighbors to maintain the road or, you know, or to even have the road there, then many roads in the county are established as public access roads. That's absolutely true.
We all pay county property taxes and we already have a thing set up to where it comes out of everybody's taxes.
If you and your neighbors want that road vacated, it's very, it's not a complicated process. Well, okay. Okay, so...
Legal access law. For what we're trying to get rid of?
Well, for everybody affected up here that uses the road, you would have legal access law.
Yeah, we can't make it something like we're being denied.
How are they going to get denied? It's still a right of way for a road through there. Through everybody's property.
Once it becomes private, it has an easement.
On the other side of my property, there's an old road that has been turned back to the landowners. It goes nowhere anymore. And that is actually half mine and half my neighbors and they have an easement to get back and forth. It's the same thing on the main road. It's not something that's difficult. Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I'm sorry, what was your name?
My name's Terry.
Terry, I mean, if you wanted to work with myself and with the Community Development Director, Joe Rolfe, I mean, we could try to help you through the process of vacating the road if that's something you guys want to do. It does require that everybody affected beyond the point at which you want to vacate it has to approve it. So it's not just something where a simple majority can make the decision. Everybody has to agree that's affected. But there's a legal process to do it. I'm not a lawyer, but there is a process in place under state statute to do it and under the county ordinance. So it is possible. And like Rod said, I mean, we just vacated a section of road last week. So, I mean, it does happen. It's not uncommon.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry.
Good evening. My name is Susan Carter. I'm the other lawyer here tonight. My clients received the other citation. But I have a couple of questions, just clarifications. When you talk about the list on the website, is that the 2011 transportation plan or is it a different list?
It's a different list. I have a copy out in my truck. Bring it with me. I could go get it. But it was a list that was posted on the website, I believe, in, Jessica's here somewhere, 2011 or '12. It was developed by employees, we honestly don't know who did it. It was done by somebody that doesn't work there anymore and we're not sure who did it. It has a date on it of March, I think March 11th of 2011.
Well, that's the date of the transportation plan, County Transportation Plan. It's March 11th. The County Transportation Plan is dated March 2011.
It actually wasn't until 2012.
Okay, the date is 2011.
You've got a list that you don't know who made it, when it was done, or if it's even valid?
Very good. With respect to roads and right of ways, my specialty is actually road property. My clients live on Gravelford. I found a deed from the homeowners along Gravelford in 1895 that granted to the county a 30-foot wide road. We did locate another deed for a different homeowner from 1936 which gave the county a 60-foot road in front of his home. But there's no such deed for my clients. And there's no action of condemnation. And so the road in front of them is really only 30 feet wide. Moreover, it has been suggested that in order to determine how wide the roads are, just put a tape measure in the middle of the road and move over, which completely ignores the reality of real property. Nobody even knows that that road is in the right place. It needs to be surveyed before anybody makes any decisions about mulling and enforcement citations. Because without a survey, you don't know if that road is there because it's supposed to be there or there because it was easier. The legal description is where the road should be.
I'd like to speak to that for just a moment, like Susan. Thank you for your comments and input there. But the reality is that in the surveying industry and in the roads sector, the...
I have to answer for this question.
No, go ahead. Go ahead.
It pertains to County Council. Sorry, John. The chair is stopped. So the issue of rights of way and the exact location of them can be a bit of a tricky research project. But at the end of the day, the reason the county often says we measure from the center line is that the process under O.R.S., Chapter 368, procedures under there allow for a road where there is doubt as to the exact boundaries of the right of way can be legalized in the location that they're in through a hearing process with input from the public and an accurate, modern survey that's done of the road in its physical location. So so it could be in situations, you go and look at the road files, you go back and do research back in time and they don't quite line up with where the road is physically today in 2024. But there's a way to rectify that that is...
I understand.
is commonly used, not just in this county, but all across the state to rectify the record. And so that is available to the county in a... if it comes to that. I think the county's real hope here, in the presentation made by Rod and Paul as well, I think the interest here is in cooperation that we can get a whole lot more done through collaboration with property owners than through code enforcement and getting the surveyor to go out and pinpoint exactly where the line is and then go out and measure, you know, and enforce against problem fences. That is the least efficient way. Least efficient use of taxpayer dollars to go about this. So, but to answer your question.
But what I'm trying to say is that, one, you would have to go through the hearing process.
Yes.
Hasn't been done. Two...
We would just hope for cooperation so that we can...
There's no evidence that the right of way for the entirety of Gravelford Lane is 60 feet. There is no evidence that corroborates that. And I had the title company search for me backwards and forwards and I sent it back three times. I know there is no deed to the county from any predecessor of my clients giving the county an additional 30 feet over the 1895 deed. And the only reason I reference the location of the road is because everyone seems to assume that the road is in the right place and that is not necessarily true. So in order to have a hearing and survey it, that would be a great thing. Morally, all of the homeowners along Gravelford Lane have been maintaining the roads for years. None of them can remember the last time the county came out and either fixed the potholes or gravelled the road or brushed or mowed the sides of the road. They do it. As many people prior to me have said this. It's a good route because they'll take care of it. They all want their road to be safe. They'll live on it. They'll take care of it if you just let them rather than coming along and creating issues, by issuing citations and hiring Mr. Coffey. It's just not appropriate.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have a hard time. I have a speech and I have a look and I'll try to get out what I want to say and it's very... filler and we have a branch of Upper Formosa Road. We have probably almost a mile ago, this is a little property. This property was given to my family members back in 1886 by the government for Indian lodens. I've never seen any right of ways through our property. I was told, maybe we all know that. We just told them to go ahead and build the road through it. But anyway, this probably doesn't pertain to what we're talking about. But I remember going to meetings back about eight, 10 years ago when Coos County was thinking about getting rid of some of the roads, not maintaining the roads. I went to county meetings in Coateal. So at that time, they was going to not maintain our road. But we kind of took it into our family effect to keep the road up. So at that time, the county would drop off a 10-yard load of rock. My brother would take his case back over and keep the road in shape. They hadn't told me this yet. They told, my brother told me, the county said, "You're no longer going to give the new gravel to keep the road up. You go up Upper Formosa Lane now, you have a small car and damned if you fall into a hole." So I know this doesn't pertain to the right of ways. What's the right of ways are going to affect my family? I can remember in my lifetime building fences along the road, the county road regulators covered up two fences. They're gone. They covered them up. But so that's just all I have to say.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Dal King. I got a lot of friends sitting out here and I appreciate everybody showing up. Everyone. Serious concerns. And it's not just that it is a right of way. It is the tactics that's been used by the roadmaster on enforcing these things. It is a Gestapo-type thing that he's doing, going out citing people. He cited me for a fence that I built that was on the 40-foot right of way on North Fork Lane that I replaced a shoddy, terrible old fence that I could still find. A couple of the posts are still there. And he fined me not just the minimum or the amount that was normal. I think it was something like $450. He cited me twice because I did two things. I don't know, I turned around one way and then I turned around the other. So maybe that was two ways. So I got fined twice. But we had an ongoing dispute of where that fence was going to be and whether or not it was supposed to be in there at all. So since I disputed with him, he fined me a total of $2,000. Because he didn't like what I did, that I was arguing with what I felt was my right. Now, I think that's baloney. I have since been back and forth on this. I hired Tony to come up and you've listened to him and I've been in, I don't know, three or four meetings now with you folks, one way or the other. The fine was taken away or washed away, whatever. They pulled back the fine only after considerable time and figured out there was a statute of limitations on the posting because the procedure, the shoddy procedure that the county had in place, wasn't followed. What a surprise. It's a little bit like dates and meetings that show up and then don't show up on the website. And there are things like that in this procedure. And Paul's attitude, I bet, I know that there's several people sitting behind me here that have had run-ins with him that have been absolutely rude, hurt my feelings, and have been absolutely ridiculous. And the sad thing is, you three commissioners are getting dragged into this because of the way this man has been doing these things and for some of the philosophies that apparently the county goes along with. I have a little brush hog. I can do things. It doesn't take me four to five times as long to cut around a fence post. And by the way, you guys don't cut around the fence posts either because we've got a couple that the brush hog went right through, took the top off. But the main thing is, is that we're not getting a civil matter of discussion with him. And I've heard several sincere and stories that I have talked. Yes.
I'm not going to sit here and let this devolve into a personal attack on anyone. Why do you think we're here, Mr. Sweet? We're here to be reasonable. I don't, we can go both ways on these types of things. So let's leave that there.
He's not insulting.
I'm not insulting him. I'm telling you that the procedure sucks. And the reason the procedure sucks is because of the way he's carrying out the procedure, which someone gave him marching orders. I don't know. I didn't.
I did.
Who did?
I did.
Oh, very good. So very well. I know you did, John, and I appreciate you standing up or sitting there and admitting to doing it because it's wrong the way it was done. I met with Rod, two commissioners, and Paul some time ago, last year. I said, "Why didn't you at least let us know, the landowners, that you were going to start enforcing this?" "Well, we didn't have the resources to let anybody know. And how would we ever find out who owns all these properties out here?" That was the very words. You set up a time after, this was after I'd been fined, and you set up a date that I was supposed to go in with the hearing. Apparently with the Panthers too, because they were there. Several of our friends showed up in support. And then come to find out, Mr. Coffey, the hearings officer in the public, told all of us that we should know the procedures, that this was not really just the meeting to you were going to get fined or adjusted. It was a meeting just to set the date of the next meeting so that you could get fined. And we should know that because we were all criminals. That's what he said.
That is not what you said.
What did he say, Jill?
He said to you that you should know the procedure. It's your responsibility to know the procedure.
Anybody?
He did not say... He did not say we all are criminals. He did say, Mr. Coffey, the impartial hearings director, who did tell Dal when he asked, "Why are we here today?" He said, "You're here because you broke the law."
I guess that's something like...
Is that a presumption of innocence? Because I'm missing it.
Mr. Taylor, Mr. Slater, and Mr. Chauvin, I too was present. He did very clearly imply that nobody was there unless they were guilty. He very clearly implied that nobody was present unless they were guilty. He was rude. He was unprofessional. I have never seen Mr. Coffey. I've never seen an attorney act.
You don't have a right, Jill. We're a public employee. We must have.
The fact of the matter is, he implied my client was guilty. It is not a devoluted who said she said. It is not a devoluted, he said she said. You can certainly pull the records from me if you'd like. But don't tell him they didn't say that because he did.
They did it for it, the I guilty and everybody else, there are several here.
You can claim that's not what he said, but you're wrong.
So, you know, there are, there are a lot of issues that have arisen here, and, you know, listen, the concerns are there. I wish I were omniscient in a way, but I'm not. So, you know what, we're going to have to just hash through this, hopefully, not in a, not in an adversarial or confrontational way, but in a constructive one. And I understand that Dal, you've got concerns with the way that Paul does his job. That's, that's a legitimate point to bring up if you, if you have concerns about that. I don't think that casting personal aspersions is, is a positive way to engage.
I didn't say that he was tall, short, anything, you know, whatever, Norwegian, I don't know what the hell. That isn't anything to do with personal. My personal is that, my issue is, is the process and the way we were treated in several cases of this. And I think there's a lot of people that are out here that have been either fined or harassed, where he has trespassed on property, I know of an instance of that. Several other folks here, and it is a procedure, and when you go out with a hammer and you hit people over the head, we're not, I'm not, I won't speak for everybody else, but I'm not real excited to work with the county on it. Maybe a mistake on my part, because you guys seem to have a mission in hand here. What, what we're saying is, or I'm saying is, the brush doesn't get cut, never has, they patched a road that now has truck holes in it, they just patched four months ago, or whatever it was, that didn't get fixed. Let's spend our resources, and you're tight on resources, got it. But let's spend the resources on fixing the road instead of taking on more property out of the people's hands that are finding you.
You can't manage what you're using now.
I have no interest in getting into casting aspersions either. But I refer that county employees don't imply that my clients and others didn't hear, but we all heard that meeting.
Well, hell, how the hell do I call that? I'm not here about any of the crazy Serena stuff, I'm here about Beaver Creek Road. When the hell are y'all going to break the grade again?
That's what I'm sorry, we need to, what's your name, sir?
I'm Scott Turcille.
Hi Scott.
I live up on Turcille Road, not Beaver Creek. And the potholes out on Beaver Creek are so bad right now, like that man was saying earlier, if you drive a small car, you're going to fall down. And whenever they bring their graders out, I'm going to talk about not having any ditches, that's why. There's no ditches on Beaver Creek, because whenever they bring the graders out, they have their blades at an angle, and all the gravel that they're pushing goes into the ditches. Lone Rock has no culvert underneath their road. So whenever the rain comes down, I mean, it's probably a good, about three inches deep, that we drive over every day, because the water's washed the road out.
It sounds, it sounds like a road design problem that needs to be addressed to be managed.
But yeah, I had to go down today and clean out the culvert, because it's not even my road. Because nobody comes down and cleans it out. And so when I go after compliance, a year ago, I asked for compliance, the fee was $400. I asked for it here a month ago, that's over $1,000. How the hell can it go up that much in less than a year? I'm trying to build a house at the end of Turcille Road, again. There's four houses on the road, but y'all had to go out and bring it named again. So I got everybody and their brother coming up, because they think it's a road that goes all the way through, it dead ends with my property. And everybody thinks it goes all the way through and up and over the hill, over the green. It dead ends with my forty acres, that's where it dead ends. So I got to do compliance, because the road's been there for almost a hundred years now. But I got to get road compliance.
Just for clarification, what do you mean by get compliance?
Well, according to the county, it's got to be.
Okay, you're talking about community development?
No.
No.
It's my home, first of all, I am replacing the original homestead house that I have done rebuilding, replacing. When in county, I have to have, what, twenty feet?
Compliance to have y'all inspect the road before we can build.
Okay, you're talking about a driveway confirmation? Where the driveway has to meet certain standards? Yeah, it's probably part of a bigger package that Jill would be the better one to speak to, but part of that overall permit package is a driveway confirmation that the road department does. Where we come up and inspect to make sure the driveway will meet certain standards so emergency services can get to it.
How's it go from $400 to over $1,000 in less than six months? That's what I hear.
I don't deal with that part of this.
I guess the bigger question should be, isn't that a county key about a central function here? This is incredible, they don't understand the road compliance is filmed in the yard.
I understand the driveway confirmation process, because that's the part we deal with.
Yeah, but this was part of it. Is we go in there and we ask for this compliance. And they say, "Oh, well, what's your address?" Give them the address. "Oh, well, it's over $1,000 because it's based on the address now, because it's non-compliant." It's been non-compliant for over a freaking company. Non-conformity, it's been that way for over a hundred years, because it's had two houses on it since. No, y'all came, y'all came in and named the damn road, and we didn't have to name the damn thing. Y'all named the damn thing. I don't even know why you did it. I stayed here, y'all named the road, it's never had a name on it before.
Yeah, I mean, I'd be glad to stay up to the meeting and talk to you individually, maybe Jill and I can help you out with what the issue is, that might be the best way to deal with that. Sure, I can give you my, my office, I'll give you, we're all listening. My office number's 541-396-7664. My cell phone is 541-404-1482.
Is that twenty-four hours a day?
Hopefully not. But my email address is pslater, S-L-A-T-E-R, And we also, on the county road department webpage, there's all the contact info there too, office numbers and email addresses, so you can get it there as well. You can call our office, and even when we're not there, you can leave a message on the voicemail, and we'll get an answer update. You can send an email, we have a, we do have a road department email address. Again, the list of contacts on our road department webpage are current.
Yes, sir. My name is Dave Price, I'm from Beaver Creek. And my main question is.
Can you get a little closer?
My main question is, before I bought the property, the people left, built a barn, and then about seven foot of the road. And they planted trees on the other side of my driveway, literally, not even seven feet from the road. If you come in and need to do that, am I going to be responsible for tearing down that barn and those trees? That I didn't have anything to do with? They were there when I bought the property, two thousand inches.
There is no plan to enforce on any buildings in the rightway. We have, we have wells, pump houses, there are some barns, a few other roads, and a few other structures, but there's, there's been no plan, and there is no plan to deal with those in the rightway.
There aren't, there aren't.
There weren't actual minutes, but there is, there is a recording in the meeting. And there's also a video recording available, so go, go speak with Dean and find out where you can access that recording.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Bill Leslie, Coos County resident, long time, working in March 12, 1951. So, one is, and hopefully nobody loses, False Slaters actually helped me on my road. Squeaky wheel gets the carrots sometimes. So I have, over a period of time, mentioned many, many times, a McKinley lane. And we actually do have probably one of the best McKinley lanes that I've ever been in. Going to do that, now we're going to let it go, so just, he has helped me. I believe personally, most of these people behind me, it is about their land. The other part is, it's about their money. So you're going to come along and say, "You need to move the fence." At a time prior to this meeting that we have tonight, it was, "You had to move the fence." Even if you've already done it, you had to move the fence back over. And my, my thing is, is where did the problem start? So after seventy-five, seventy-two years, looking at it for twenty-five years, I've never seen a problem. We, most of our dairy farmers, they make their own, they make, they cut their own grass, because Paul doesn't have enough time. So they do, out of their kindness and their heart, they take their mowers and they maintain the road that I drive on. Do they get wound up in it? Nope, they don't get wound up in it, because they know, they know how close to get. The county has a turnover of mower people. If the guy on that mower would have been there a little bit longer, he probably wouldn't have got in quite as much. One is, is I believe that spray is an important thing. If you don't have the proper spray, let's find the proper spray. Let's spray it as much as we possibly can. These guys didn't know that there was an herbicide program. I think that there's quite a few behind me that will spray to help Paul. It is, the problem wasn't there until all of a sudden the problem was there. And somebody started this problem, and I think he mentioned it tonight a little bit, which he stood up to, but somebody has mentioned this problem. The way that most of us heard it a month ago, was the county commissioners assigned Paul to do this job. That this, the county commissioners wanted the land, so if an internet company, a pipeline company, a telephone company came through, they had acquired the land, then they could lease to the company, and the county could have paid money. Now I'm just telling you what we all believe, because this is what we were told. That's what we were told at a meeting.
Yeah, you know what, I'm going to, no, I'm going to speak to that.
Okay. But that's why I brought it up.
There, there is absolutely zero truth to that allegation, as far as I'm concerned. There was never anything like that.
We all, we all heard it.
That I have ever heard.
Okay.
And I stand here as a, as a man who follows Jesus Christ and speaks the truth.
I think that that's part of the reason. I think that's part of the reason why these people hogged out wound up, and I just want to let you know that.
Well, sin comes short in glory of God, that was no reason to bring that up.
I don't, I didn't understand that. But the truth is the truth, and there is, there is no truth. You want to speak to that, Counselor? For, for any, so just to clarify, for any public utility placed in a public rightway, state law dictates we have to allow them to build there, we can't stop them, and we get zero. We don't get paid a thing, we can't even charge them a permit fee.
Okay, well that answers the question, that most of these people behind me are wound up because of that. And again, it goes back to, let's, let's find the truth, and we did, and I found that truth. So I appreciate it.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
My name is Sonny King, I live up on Shelly Road, South Lane actually. I've spoke to you guys before, I'm a little bit different than most of these folks, I live in a residential neighborhood. That I live on between two curves, which had a very, very difficult time getting out of my driveway, because of the brush and things that were there. The county rarely comes up on Shelly and does brush clearing, even when they've come to do gutter work, it's been spotty at best. When I bought my property, it cites my property line as being the road. Now that's not your problem, that's how the title company gave me the description of my property, that the road was one side of my property line. But the other thing is, I don't know how many ordinances the city, I mean, the county has, how many pages or books of them. How am I supposed to know that, A, the county has it right away there, it was never mentioned in my title insurance that I received, and all these other ordinances, I don't know how many people here have ever read through all those, even as commissioners have read through all the ordinances that are out, that the county has. How are we supposed to know these things advance and get beat up when we break one internet? Paul is a very nice young man, I met him when I was landscaping my front yard after I had moved all the brush, so I could see better getting out of my driveway, of my property. I wanted to landscape it, everything I was wanting to do was put at road level or below. And Paul's comment was, "We don't allow anything in the rightway." No dicks, ends, or butts, no matter where you live, we all have the same rules. Oftentimes, cities, counties have rules that are different for rural areas versus residential areas. Why can't we have a permit that allows us to landscape and maintain property that we have? That's all I've been trying to do. I was in the middle of that when Paul, or one of his employees, me by person, said I wasn't allowed to. I asked to speak to Paul to me by, I showed him what I was doing, basically flat out said I couldn't do it. I couldn't do anything, basically, within the rightway. And I understand that he has rules to strive to enforce, but why can't we work together to find ways to improve the properties that we have and not beat each over, over the head with a big stick? And then I went to the next step, which was to meet the commissioner who was in charge of the road, Mr. Sweet. And I'll have to admit, I was very disappointed in his response, which was, he didn't care what the people wanted, he supports the road department. And so I went to the three commissioners, and I actually presented my plans, showed them pictures of what I wanted to do and what I was doing, and nothing ever came of that. So, there should be a process for those of us who live in more residential areas, that we can landscape our property, because the county is not going to ever put sidewalks in on Shelly Lane, they're not going to add any lanes to Shelly Lane. And they have no use of that rightway. So they, Paul even said, and I ran the water district with everyone, he didn't like the water being in the ground. Or I was suing, or he likes the electric as well. So that's my problem, I just would like to be able to maintain, I'm getting old, I can't lead as well anymore, I want to level the property out, put some rock in, so there's nothing there that would ever be, needed to be maintained, but it would be at the road level or below. So that's all I was trying to do, so thank you for your time.
My name is Candice Demelch, I own both sides of North Bank Lane. I have moved my fence. I would like to say that I believe this issue is regarding the mowers primarily. And most people can understand that, I own a mower, seven feet is adequate, that was an established precedent. Being forced to move my fence thirty feet from the center line was a financial burden, and it was emotional distress dealing with the road department. My legal deed does not say there is a sixty-foot right of way through the middle of my property. It says that my property goes from the mountain to the river. It says that my property goes from the mountain to the river, except for that portion of North Bank County Road. And the legal description of a road is a prepared surface. The legal description of a right-of-way is the, um, the ability to, uh, travel over another person's land, and I may have told, "This is not my land." Well, I never would've put the fence there if I saw in my legal deed that there was a sixty-foot right-of-way through the middle of it. Thank you.
My name is Deborah Dees, and I'm not a landowner on Northern County Roads, however, I'm here kind of representing an absentee landowner for an estate on Shelley. I just have a couple of questions, um, some of this is just information from my case, 'cause I don't know. Are the iron posts that mark the corners of a lot of lots of the road, are those compliant with a sixty-foot right-of-way? So that's a question that I need answered to someplace. Um, and are the water meters that are in ground there, are those at or near the limit of the sixty-foot? The water meter, the water things in the ground? I should add, Sonny. Are those at or near the sixty-foot limit? Um, and I've talked to a couple of other people, does the county, does the county have any plan for straightening some of the S-curves up Shelley? Because there are a couple there that are pretty spry, especially in icy weather and et cetera, and no, no shoulders at all, you're either on pavement, or you're down. Excuse me. And, and the other question, well, the representative, the house that I'm talking about, if that sixty-foot right-of-way were enforced, there would be no place to park at that house, you could park maybe one car there and ride, you know, there's often three, four, or five cars there. So, is that gonna be enforced? Probably not anytime in the near future, it sounds like, but it's something that the owners don't wanna know about. Um, and are there any plans for straightening up there? If there are, when the county has to make a road deviation from where it is now, does the visual change of the center of the road, does that then move the right-of-way? Or do they have to make all their changes within that sixty-foot right-of-way? They need to straighten a curve, or add a curve, or whatever that kind of thing. So I just, quite more information, questions, I don't know, I don't have the urgent issues that some of these people do, but I think some of these questions might help people understand what's going on.
So to answer a couple of things, at this point, there's no plan straightening any of the curves on Shelley Lane. Um, and your question about, uh, if we were gonna straighten a curve or shift something over, um, we would have to do it within the existing right-of-way, or we would have to go through a process to obtain additional right-of-way.
So then you're looking at possible eminent domain or purchasing property or something?
I mean, there's a legal process, I have to call, I won't tell you the specifics, but I mean, there's a legal process for, you know, trying to negotiate purchase of additional land for right-of-way. Eventually, if, you know, there's all these steps you have to go through, eminent domain is kind of the last thing.
Okay, um, and after, well, it's kind of been a, like this one house, where they're gonna lose parking space, and I know there are a couple of houses, other houses up there that are the same way, um, would they be grandfathered so that they could keep driveway space?
I mean, as a general rule, we're not in the business of taking away parking spaces. I mean, you know, I'd have to look at it case by case, I don't know which spot you're talking about, but...
Well, the house has been there for seventy years, so...
Yeah. I wouldn't think that we would be doing anything that would be taking away their parking spaces.
You mentioned post offices are a structure.
Yeah, and a vehicle of some sort is not a structure in the right-of-way, so we would be handled differently.
Oh, okay. And you mentioned mailboxes, because postal, so the post office puts their mailboxes up where they put them at.
Yeah, we've had some initial conversations with some of the local postmasters, and it's hard to have any dialogue with them, so we're gonna probably have to go to the next level, which is Portland, uh, their folks up there and try to have a conversation. We've actually had them build structures in the right-of-way without even talking to us, and in one case up in Lakeside area, it blocks a part of the actual travelway of the road. It's a gravel road, but now our road is about four feet narrower than it used to be because of the structure they built.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Kind of back, I did have a couple of questions. Clarification, excuse me, uh, there's a lot of rumors, whatever, around that the county is planning to oppose a sixty-foot right-of-way on all of the roads, not where they are now, but that's what I've heard, that, and actually from John at one point some months ago, that that's where the county was going with the whole thing, and I think that has a lot to do with what the folks behind me are talking about, is that Paul's been going around and saying, "They're all gonna be sixty-foot around." And, and the second part of the question is, on places like North Fork Lane, where my situation was, even this evening, I looked on the computer, and it pretty clearly shows that that road was forty-foot for all these years. Well, I would like to put that back, that fence back where it originally was, and place that fence on the forty-foot line like it shows on the maps. So, just kind of wondering about those things.
Now, I'll let Paul answer that.
And so back...
My knowledge, no, never been a conversation about being all road cases, being all right-of-ways.
No, the right-of-ways are what they are, I mean, there's road case files that talk to when the road was first taken in by the county into the road maintenance system. Um, and our right-of-ways around Coos County, the ones we maintain, they range, and we've some that are twenty, all the way up to some that are over a hundred. Trans-Pacific Parkway on the north spin is between a hundred and a hundred and fifty feet, um, that's probably the most recent road the county took into the system. But the majority of our roads, or our right-of-ways, are sixty feet. Under ORS 368, if in the road case there's no width designated, then the default is fifty, five-zero.
Okay, if there's no record of it, is that...
If there was, yeah, if there was no width stated or clarified in the road case, and this is my understanding, Colton can correct me if I'm wrong, if there's nothing in the original road case when the county took it into the system, if they didn't clarify the width at that time, then the default width is fifty feet, five-zero.
Okay, so my last question is, assuming tomorrow someone were to come into your office to find out the width of a right-of-way, excuse me, right-of-way on any particular, with that document not being on there, what document are we using, and on what basis are you using to establish or to identify what the right-of-way there is?
What we normally use is the road case file and also state plat maps, which are, those maps are developed based on surveys and road case files.
Okay, and if no surveys, I mean, can you help produce those, I mean, show those?
Anybody who wants to come in the office, or the surveyor, sorry to put you on the spot, Mike, but the surveyor's office, um, he actually has any survey that's been done in Coos County, he should have, or have access to. Um, we rely on the surveyor's office quite often for what's been surveyed and what hasn't along the roads, and we've used their office, I don't know, probably ten or twelve times now to identify where the edge of a right-of-way is.
Okay, so may I ask him a question, is he on the clock?
He's hearing, and I believe...
I won't put him on the spot, I won't insult him, I hope. Who is it? Oh, excuse me, okay. So, are there a lot, mostly, most of the roads have been surveyed in Coos County, or the county roads?
No, no.
Can you guess how many that have been?
Have been?
I mean, to your knowledge, fifty percent?
No, no.
Ten percent maybe? Closer to that?
I don't think, in most cases, the actual roads themselves have never been surveyed. Okay, they started out as a market road easement.
Okay.
And then progressed over the years, and they have, some of them, not all of them, have a designated right-of-way, and many of them have never been located. Many of the deeds just call, they describe the property, except for anything that falls in the roadway, that's just what it says on the deed, but there's no width specified in many cases. So like Paul says, you have to go back to the road case and see if there's a specified right-of-way. Uh, and they vary.
Okay, and so you folks are prepared to do that, if someone goes in to find out what that, what you send to road case or whatever, I'm not talking about him, but...
We can make that information available, um, the road cases are also available in the clerk's office.
How will you base your decisions, is what I'm asking? How will you say yea or nay, that road, that right-of-way is here or whatever?
Well, you mean deciding where it is physically compared to what maybe it was when it was first taken in?
Where is, where should it be, and where does the center line of the highway be, or the actual right-of-way edge?
If, if there, and Mike, you can help here, if the road, if the road right-of-way was ever surveyed, and there's a center line survey description.
Sure.
Then we should be able to identify where that is in relation to where the road's built.
But according to...
But like Mike said, a lot of cases, that's not the case.
So, what do you do?
So then we would look at, the process we've been doing, is we would identify through road case files and plat maps, what's the width of the road, the right-of-way, and then if there's, if there's any question from an adjacent landowner about where that right-of-way might be, where the edges are, we have the survey actually go out and survey the road where it's at, and identify where that edge would be.
Okay, is that what you did on my particular case?
Uh, yes, I believe that was exactly what I did.
You did? Because we were told that he'd never surveyed that.
Uh, he surveyed that, I believe, twice, because I think the first stakes that were put up that somehow removed or knocked down or something, and he had to go reset them.
And, and again, when we talk about surveying, we're talking about measuring from the center line of the road where the road is physically today, and, uh, that is short of legalizing the road, going through a process of hearing and notice and all that to clear up any...
Right, you're willing to go through that process.
If necessary, but, you know, it's much easier to just measure from the center line and say that, you know, this is...
Right, I have a problem where blue play slides moved it over the years, many, many times.
Right, yeah.
It's where blue play land, so, just trying to figure out, is the road here, really should be over here, ten feet, five feet, whatever? So, just willing, if you folks were willing to establish that by survey, legal methodology and so on.
We can, but we don't need to, because the road's where it is.
No, that's not right, because the road, the county moved the road, or the nature moved the road.
Nature road, yeah.
So, I mean, which could cause me to have to move my fence to be in compliance with this rule. And then I have one final question. When you have, had published originally, I'm not sure if you did, Paul, or not, but published on the website, on the road department, you talked about, as I think the word is, right, y'all might correct me on this, and I respect that, but it said, "All repairs to fences must be run through the road department," or whatever, roadmaster. And my question is, see, I'm kind of a literal guy, when I look at these things, it's kind of an absolute, so when you say that, that if my cows get out, the fence needs to be repaired, that's, shall I call you at midnight on Friday night? I'm not gonna get a response, in the meantime, my cows are out on the road, I put them back in, I can't, I can't even fix my fence.
Yeah.
No, it is true by the legal...
You can fix your fence.
And then you'll get that ticket, Dale.
Yeah, then I can come back here for another time. No, I mean, see, all of these, we need, in your process of reviewing this, those are the things that have, need to change, because I'm liable for my cows, if you tell me that I can't fix the fence in the middle of the night, Paul's not gonna be up, you don't have 24/7, the sheriff's department can't do it, so it's a matter of, let's do a practical solution on this, and talking about, let's working with the community, let's talk about how, what does a minor repair mean? Sometimes I can fix it with a staple, sometimes I gotta put in several panels, sometimes, whatever. So, there's gotta be some common sense in this operation, and that's where I'm coming from on this. Thank you.
Got me thinking, something just came out, Tina Kotek just gave us some emergency money for the roads, and somehow we've had a really bad December, I don't know, all of a sudden this money coughed up. Who asked for that money? How much money are we getting? We have slides, we have those kind of things, if, I mean, honestly, I don't think December was that bad to warrant aid emergency money. And when we have trees fall down on fences, most of the people around here cut our own logs and clean out our own roads to get by, and sometimes we'll call the county to deduce a little bit, but our fences get damaged and that stuff, so you're not gonna ask us to go get a permit to fix a fence from a major tree? And how much money are you getting? And what are you gonna do with it?
So, related to your first question on the governor's declaration of an emergency, Coos County was one of the counties named, I don't think anybody from emergency management is here, they handle getting the information from our county to the state, so that they can make a decision on whether or not to declare an emergency. For transportation, ODOT gathers the information, so ODOT contacted us and asked if we had any damage. We did have damages, but none of our damages qualified that we're aware of at this point. The damages have to be on what's called, uh, part of the federal aid highway system, which means that only, only our major collector roads within our county road system would qualify. So near here, Lampalane, Old Broadbent Road, Sidkin Lane, some of those, those are all major collectors, South Powers, uh, those are major collectors, they're in the federal aid system. If we had a single project or a single failed area of some sort, it has to be $5,000 or more in damage before it qualifies for that program. We did have, uh, about a year and a half ago, not, early last winter, we did have two sites that qualified for special funding for that, one on Olive Barber and one on Thirteenth Center Road up on Blue Ridge.
So that article was false, naming Coos County, did those thoughts?
No, because, I don't know what damages ODOT had, ODOT's included in that, so they might have had damages somewhere that qualified, it just, we at the county didn't have any. And there could be cities that have roads or streets that qualify.
With the flooding, the tide gate down on my property, there's been more damage to that, could that money be used for that?
Can the money from the state declaration be used for flooding down there? Probably not. You could contact the state emergency management, or even county emergency management, and see, but I doubt it.
I'm Jared Sprout, I'm born 1981, had the pleasure of living here my whole life, uh, I think there's a lot of people in this crowd that are, that are smart, intelligent, hardworking, and they've sat there and listened, and they haven't, you know, raised their concerns, because we really just wanna do what's right. What, a lot of these people have been born and raised in these places, and they wanna maintain them, they wanna do what's right, they don't wanna rock the boat, they don't, they especially don't want somebody to come up with a thumb and go, "This is what you need to do." And I think that's the conception here.
Yes, yep.
And that's just not the way it is, it didn't walk a lot. The one thing that comes back, county government, all is money. Money, that was Paul's, you know, talk about was added expense, you know, yada, yada, you know, and it makes sense, I mean, it does, you know, repairs cost money, downtime costs money, um, I'd like to know... I'd like to know, there's got to be a formula for what, how much can you brush a day? On a gravel road, on a paved road, average? Now, they all vary from road to road. And if there is, that's great. If you're going to take the easement and move fences, you're going to add to that. You're going to add to that workload. So if you can brush it three times quicker, that's great. But with a little bit of quick math back in the back, you guys have 200 and some odd gravel road miles. If you're to add five feet to that, that's two and a half feet on either side, that's 1.3 million square feet. If you're going to do the 600 feet or 600 miles of road, paved and gravel, Coos County, at that same, it'd be 13 million square feet. So I would think, and Paul might have answered for me, there should be a formula really quick. Blaming footage per day, what's the added cost, what's the benefit? Does it equal out? That's great. But it just, it's all about money and you're going to add to your workload. I've never, people don't like to add to their workload. And what we're going to now, maybe double it? It just seems, seems like that situation.
So right now, our primary brush cutter operator, who's been doing it for 20 plus years, and I rely on him a lot for information associated with brush cutting. He's probably hiding, but my road foreman's here tonight as well and he's also cut roads, so he has some experience with this. There's even a guy here that used to work for us that doesn't anymore. He's got some experience with this. It's about a mile a day right now. When there's nothing in the way or minimal things in the way, it's usually between three and five miles.
And that's for gravel and paved?
Gravel and paved. That's the average. And again, I'm not the guy running the machine, I'm not doing it. I'm relying on my staff to tell me what could be done, when, you know, what either... We do have some roads where we have minimal structures in the way. So, you know, they do have some experience of how fast can they move when there's minimal in the way. And, you know, I'm relying on them to give me reasonable estimates of how much faster can they do this if we don't have fences in the way.
At the added expense of the more area, I mean, I get that there's not going to be any way, but if you're brushing seven feet, you have an average, an average you're going to cover. But now it's an unobstructed 25 feet. Well, I mean, I could drive down the road, brush the road, and up and down and around, but now you're going to stop, you're going to have multiple passes, I mean, it's on and on. I mean, and to what expense to the landlords? I mean, I don't know if you call, say, West Coast fencing or, I mean, that's anybody's here for, I'm sorry. Just a contract fencer and ask for a fencing bid. It's really expensive. It's not, now you have a burden, these ranchers and loggers to, this super expensive, especially not a good time, fence spits cost eight dollars, nine dollars a piece.
Oh, in our dreams.
To a couple of those points. So even if we're mowing or brushing in a wider area, when there's nothing in the way, we can move substantially faster. Right?
You're still...
But there's still terrain.
There is terrain, there are some other issues you're going to work around. But again, I'm relying on my guys that do it. They're the ones doing the work, they're the ones telling me how much easier it would be with things out of the way. Because I'm not the guy out there doing it.
We're the ones that are there.
So, so to get to your point about, you know, fencing costs, that's one of the reasons why, you know, there's never been a push by me or the commissioners to... I know I don't have any intention, and I don't think they do, telling people, you know, you've got to move this perfectly good fence right now. There are some areas, like I said earlier, we have some safety concern areas around the county and some maintenance concern areas around the county where there are fences in our way to do things like create a roadside ditch where there needs to be one. Or areas where we have sight distance issues in corners especially. So, you know, there's some of those kinds of issues. But, you know, that's why we've been trying to let people know, and it's a bummer, it's a huge bummer, when I've got to be the bad guy when somebody's already built a fence and say, "Ah, I wish you'd have called me first." Because we could have had a conversation, you could have built it over here where we really needed it. We could have avoided, you know, this unpleasant situation that we're both in now.
Absolutely, but you keep coming back to, there is, be certain safety concerns in certain spots. Where are they?
That's just, that's just some of the safety concerns. Just the day-to-day maintenance of the road, we have fences in the way all over the place. We literally have hundreds of miles of fencing around the county. Right? I mean, if anybody's doing it around our road system, you would see it, it's all over the place. And it's something that's happened over the years that, you know, the county's allowed to happen. I kind of inherited it when I took this job. And so I'm trying to figure out ways to do our work more efficiently and effectively and make our road system better and more safe. And it's not easy to do.
I think everybody else is here to try to come to some type of agreement too. And unfortunately, it's been sidetracked tonight. I mean, we started off the meeting with, we have some ideas. The idea was they're going to move the fence, that I heard, there was no... Well, if you're going to work on it, you're going to move it. There wasn't, you're going to move it seven feet, you're going to move it 14 feet, you're going to move it out of the right. There was, there was ideas of, you know, if we go down there and say, "Don't spray, we'll take care of the maintenance." I'd just say to you guys, X amount of dollars for a linear foot. But there was no, you know what, that sounds like a good idea. There was a lot of blank looks and we moved on. But if we're here to move forward, we need to have some ideas. We need to come to some type of agreement, some type of footwork, we're not going to do it tonight. But to sit here and just talk circles, I just don't, I think it's a waste of your time, our time. So there needs to be some, you know, I would have kind of expected out a printed piece of paper to mine and said, "If this is the agenda, this is our idea that we can review." Instead, we've kind of gotten, we've got ideas, but we don't know what they are.
I think, my idea of this meeting tonight was to listen to... My idea of the meeting tonight was that we were going to listen and learn what the issues are. If we have another meeting here, I'm sure, or if we don't, in between this meeting and that meeting, we would like to get to the master... Pardon me?
When is that meeting? If this meeting is to figure out what we want and the next meeting is to figure out what you're going to do to implement, when is that meeting?
Yeah, you can come to that meeting. And when is that meeting? The 23rd of January, at what time? Oh, here, 1:30 in the Owen Building. So our idea was to take in information and then I...
That's on a Tuesday when we're all at work. How are we supposed to have input when you have a meeting when the majority of us can't be here because we have jobs?
Well, we scheduled a meeting then. If you want to have it here again, we'll do that, we'll look for a time and we can do that. That's not a problem. Pardon me? Yeah, and William turned the heat on, Bob said.
That's exactly what the issue is.
He didn't do a very good job. So, hey, that was the idea, we worked together. I mean, I don't want to say something here without discussing it with the roadmaster and his crew and the other two commissioners and come up with an idea that they don't like. So we wanted some time to listen and come up with an idea and then have that meeting. So that's the plan.
With a lot of public, you know, meetings and we're going to move forward, make plans, there's usually a committee that's made up of the public that gets the help for your ideas in a more structured setting than this, where you have more back and forth. And then you can present it to the public. You know, us public love to just be told by, "You know what, you guys came up with the same old for everything." With, without, I mean, this, obviously this is very valuable input at next. And there hasn't been any, any real discussion about how we're going to fix it, there's been lots of feelings.
You should have sat up here, I thought there was a lot of input.
Well, I mean, there's a lot of input, but actual, to move forward, that's bull's. I mean, that's what I'm talking about, and there hasn't been that. So who's going to, who's going to decide that in a room of the county or wherever? I mean, I really think, I don't want to complicate this more, but I really think that a committee of some, of some of the landowners that have concerns and want to volunteer their time to help form some type of agreement is better than...
I like that idea, Jared. Sounds like that works.
Everybody raise their hand once more.
You, would you be on it?
Oh, yeah, I'll raise my hand, sure.
Charlie? Would you be on it?
I was on that road commissioner once. Yeah. We're landowners and we're working on the county, what do I say, road, on right-of-way.
Sorry, Charlie, name in the mic, sir.
Oh, Charlie Waterman, abandoned. Finding commission, I fight drag, combed it down, no other. But the thing of it is, you heard tonight, we landowners work in the road. We ditch, clean out the culverts, put rock, gray, brush. I mean, and found out that this is illegal, we're supposed to have a permit. It's impossible when we have one of these storms and it blows all the trees down. You tell me we have to call in, cut the tree out of our roadway when we've got to go to work. You got to resolve some kind of way to allow us to do these, minimum, come minimum type of work in the road. Maybe you could trade off some of that fence, right-of-way, for a guy. We're saving you a lot of time. Unplugging the culvert, stopping the rock being washed off the road. We're doing a lot of savings to the county. Just give us some leeway here. I mean, I just frustrated with the stronghold that we're sort of getting from the county here. I don't know, I've been around here all the time. We used to bring out, maybe we don't need the road department, we'll just put it out to custom operators and let them bid on it. I don't know if we need to go back to that. But that is an option that is available if people are unhappy about the road department. Okay.
Thank you, Charlie.
Is that feasible for the landowners to get a tax reduction?
You know, that's, that is, that's a really difficult question, Mark, and frankly, you know, frankly, the reality is that, that from your property tax bill, and for those of you who didn't hear, the question was, is it reasonable for landowners who are maintaining the side of the road on their property to receive some tax credit for that? And so, so I just wanted to get that out of the microphone to you all. But it's, it would be an extremely difficult calculus and a legal process to get that figured out, first of all. Secondly, the county portion of that property tax is, is really pretty insignificant. It's only a dollar and eight per thousand. And the fact of the matter is, I mean, we're, as a county, we're sucking wind as it is, right? And none of that property tax goes to road maintenance anyway. If he donates his time, is there a credit we could write so you could count him against your federal taxes? Oh, I think that's totally doable. Yeah.
But it's not legal.
I mean, I mean, it seems to me, it seems to me that that's totally doable. We'll have to, you know, get with counsel to work through that, but I think that that's a pretty good idea. Yeah, I'm sorry, I misunderstood your questions. So, yeah.
Hi, my name's Amanda Waterman. I, my sister, own about a mile's worth of county road on both sides of Royal Creek. And our fences predate your county road easement. And yet we maintain the fence and the road on both sides. We do all the spraying because you guys don't up there. We take care of the ditches because again, you guys don't. You haven't changed the culvert on Royal Creek Road in, I think, 30 years.
I've got one you can crawl under.
And yet you are having problems with our fences that have been there longer than I've been alive. Our ranch has been there for over 100 years. And now our fences are an issue. The fences that are in the exact same place as they have been for the past 100 years are now an issue. Because why? Because your mower operator isn't good enough to miss them? We do everything on our own. Our county has become accustomed to taking care of ourselves.
Absolutely.
And then you come and you put out this notice saying that if any of our fences need repair, we have to move them, what, 30 feet? 60 feet would put it in the middle of my living room. So I know for a fact my great-grandpa would not have given me 60-foot easement through our property. I know that, without a doubt. I lost my train of thought. Yes.
Yeah, has anybody told you that you need to move your fence?
Well, no, your, your notice said that if our fences need repair, then we would have to move them, right? My sister and I keep our fences in pretty good repair, but we do have neighbors and they like to spin cookies when they're drunk and drive through our fences five times on both sides of the road, it was fun. And by your statement, you would have to sacrifice 60 feet of our property that you say is not yours, it's ours. But we wouldn't be able to use it, is that correct? Am I correct in that, yes or no?
No, you're not.
Okay.
You're a little bit in error on the, I think you're not, I think you're not figuring your 60 feet. I mean, your 60 feet is total, right? 30 feet from...
Both sides of the road, I own both sides of the road. And I had a neighbor who went through my property fence on both sides. He managed to hit both sides. Which 50 feet of fence from South Coast Fencing, that's five grand, just so you know. Okay, so by your notice, because it required repair, we would have to move it, yeah?
Yeah, you know, by the, by the way that it's written...
I'm having a hard time with your inability to say yes or no.
That seems like that would be indicated.
Okay.
And as has been discussed earlier this evening, we definitely need to...
But it's still my property, yeah? That I can't, I can't pasture my cows on it? I can't hay it? Yeah. So by all accounts, is the county going to reimburse me for the diminished amount of beef cows that I'm allowed to grow on my roadway? I'm not done yet. Are they going to reimburse me for the diminished amount of beef that I am capable of producing off of my property, which I use to pay my property taxes? Will there be a reimbursement? No.
No, so...
Will they reimburse me for the diminished amount of hay that I will be able to harvest to feed the animals that I use to pay my property taxes? Let it get a number?
Right.
Are you going to pay the property taxes on the diminished amount of land that I am allowed to use on my own property? Nope.
It's not your property, you just ran it.
Oh, right. The thing is...
Oh, no, can I just respond to...
No, I'm not done yet.
Well, can I just respond one more and then I'll continue? You're calling it the property.
It is my property.
Well, so the land that's within the right-of-way is publicly dedicated, so it's...
So it's not my property?
Private property, no, it's the public's property.
So you're going to start paying the property taxes for the right-of-way through my property? Is that right?
It's taxing, that's a public, publicly owned property.
Not the amount that you're kindling.
It's not taxing, too.
It's not tax exempt because I own both sides. The taxes are for the full amount of acreage that I own.
Well, if that's, well, if that's, if you have been taxed on the public right-of-way portion of your land, then that is absolutely an issue that needs to be taken up with the assessor. No, look, you, I don't understand why that's funny. Because what I'm saying is that if you've got a roadway through your property, whether it's 20 feet wide or 30 feet wide or 50 feet wide, if you're not able to use that land and it's dedicated for public access...
But that is my point, because there is no designated number on any of the roads. Nobody knows what the right of way actually is because your records are not clear. Nobody knows. The records are in the warehouse. You have to dig for months and months to find this stuff. No one knows what their actual designated usage is. Okay, my next question is, our fences, like I said, are very well kept. They're all pretty much new. Are you going to reimburse us for the cost to move them?
We're, we're.
On whatever, I'm sorry, on whatever amount of distance you deem on a whim. Are you going to reimburse us for the cost?
So this is not a whatever we deem on a whim issue, okay? That's why we're having this meeting tonight is in order to establish exactly what the concerns are. Because, because the fact of the matter is, the look, I came into this office one year ago and this issue came up in the first week. I, I, I got no idea what's going on. As, as the time has gone by, and we have gotten feedback from people all over the county, it's become clear that this is, this is an issue that has to be worked out to a reasonable resolution.
Can I write you a why? Because as a resident of Coos County, all of us, we're very proud of where we come from. We're proud of the things that we accomplished by blood and sweat and tears.
Me too.
And, yeah. But then we have people who write a broad spectrum letter. They don't know anybody and they tell us what we will have to do on our property. If I have a neighbor who gets drunk and drives through my fence, one, I will either have to pay you to fix my own fence by getting a, pay you for a permit, yeah? To fix my fence on what's supposed to be my property. Is that right? Or if I need to do a job, I will have to buy a permit from you to do that job if it is close to the road.
Yep.
Yeah.
You want to play gotcha?
I would like, I would like the county.
Cause what I'm here for is to have a reasoned conversation to work out the issue in a way that's agreeable.
Agreeable would be seven feet. We need seven feet on the side of the road to be able to do what we need to do. If there is a culvert, give us a little bit of extra access. That would be reasonable. Telling us that we have to move our fences 20 feet into the middle of our hay fields is not reasonable. Okay, but that's what your letter said. That's what I read on the internet, the post for this meeting. That's what I read. But you didn't do that, you didn't give us the opportunity to have a conversation. If you have, and I forget who it was that said this, but if you have a problem fence line, speak to that homeowner, that landowner, and discuss a compromise. You don't come at us with, well, you're gonna do this or I'm gonna fine you. That is not, that is not how this should work. But that's the way we're going to handle it.
First off, I'd like to thank the commissioners for putting up with all these rich ranchers and loggers. Earlier in the meeting, we talked about brushing and fencing and the fact that fencing was getting tangled up in the brushing machine and costing all these hours. And I heard stories about you needed 30 feet to do it because you can't do six feet, you can't do eight feet. I bought a brushing machine and ran the business for about three years. You have no idea what I'm talking about. You can do six feet, you can do 30 feet, depends on the machine you have. And what I recommend, and I'm not infusing our roadmaster this or nothing, but he said his crew. Well, the truth of it is, his crew goes out sometimes. Maybe you get to run the brushroom a day, maybe you get two, and maybe you get two. When you're running a piece of equipment occasionally, you don't learn what the equipment will do. You take, you take loggers, ranchers, road builders, they have specific guys that run a specific piece of machinery and they get very good on it. And like, I believe it was Jared Sprowd, I don't hear good because I am old, but he was wanting to know how many miles a day or how many part miles a day. That varies huge because of the ground, the terrain, and the operator. What I would highly recommend the county looking into doing is maybe contracting out the brushing. And then you have, don't have that problem anymore. They pay for their maintenance and they probably get a, once you do the same road over and over and over, you learn all kinds of tricks, you learn where things are, how close you can get. And if it would benefit the roadmaster, it'd benefit the county, as you guys, county commissioners said, it'd benefit the taxpayers because it would cost as much and they'd get more debt. And that, I was trying to point out a solution, not a complaint. I don't own any property, I don't have any fences, and not going to either. I'm just gonna drive around and watch it.
So, I think we got some more.
Billy King, I've got a question about local fence. My neighbor's fence just fell over in the storm about two days ago. Maybe he driven by it on North Fork. Anyway, is, my question is, he barely gets around. Is he gonna need to get a permit to replace that fence? Is he gonna have to move that fence off the road on Stephen Bay, about two, three feet off the road maybe?
Under the current policy, yes. We, we're here tonight for another work session to try to work through if there's a way to, have become a something that's more agreeable to everybody than, that we can actually use at the road department and still be able to do our maintenance. But as it sits right now, under county ordinance and policy, yes.
So he's gotta pay permit?
It's a hundred and fifty dollars for a permit to work on the right of way. And that, to clarify, because there were a couple comments, um, just to clarify, if you're doing something that is, could be deemed as a benefit to the road system, we sometimes do waive that permit fee. For instance, if you, um, we have a landowner here tonight that was proposing to remove a bunch of trees from the right of way out on Fallow Road. We waived that permit fee to do that because it was a, it was a benefit to the road system to remove those trees.
And the other thing I want to ask is, what is the real clear benefit? Other than when Rob and I took a drive out on North Fork Road and had to drive in the center lane, if you recall, to get down the road, what is the real benefit of brushing beyond seven feet? And how is that helping the potholes, the dips that you hit in a tractor and bounce and hit your head? And any other issue like that that is not being maintained on the road currently? How does that brushing, the benefit of that brushing override what's not being done on the road system currently?
Yes.
Yeah, the actual travel.
Right, yeah.
Yeah, I got you. So brushing and mowing, you know, roadside vegetation control is just one piece of the puzzle when it comes to road maintenance. I mean, yeah, there's surface treatments, there's drainage treatments, I mean, we have striping, we have all kinds of things that we do to the road to try to keep them safe and reasonable for driving on it. But roadside brushing, if we, like I said before, when we have fences that are close to the road, I mean, everybody knows how fast vegetation grows around here, right? So if we cut it back to the fence, how long does it take before that vegetation's back over the edge of the road?
I'd say we all have a pretty good idea of that.
Yeah, it doesn't take long.
Yeah.
And so.
Can you deal with that?
When we can cut it back further and we can also use herbicides to help control that so that we don't have to come back and cut as often, then we, there's a lot longer time between when we have to come back.
You said your cycles.
More than two inches off the road though.
You said your cycles, three to five years to keep up.
It's, it's in that range.
Yeah, so how the hell are you gonna keep up with another 20 feet on each side?
Well, like I said to Jared, when, if there's less items in the way of a mower, he can move a lot faster, even if.
Have you ever mowed a more, have you ever mowed a more?
Yeah.
If you have to mow more land, it takes more time, if you didn't know that.
But I think it depends on if you're mowing around fence posts and fences or if you're mowing around the middle of the farm.
You know why? Because we have power poles in our hayfields. You know that?
I've mowed around them too.
Oh, have you?
Yeah.
Well, I can.
I have a few of them, I'm a dairy farmer, so I've worked on their farming.
If I take a turn around a fence or around a fence post, which happens every time I mow hay, or around a power pole, I guarantee you that takes less time than it does to go out and mow a couple more sloths.
You still have the fence, it's just farther from the road. You still have to mow to it.
And you still have the fence.
If the fence is at the edge of the right of way, we're not gonna be mowing all the, all the way to the fence.
What?
We're gonna maintain a much wider swath alongside the road than we do currently in most roads.
Then what's the difference?
But not to the fence.
But not necessarily to the fence, if it's on the edge of the right of way. But that also depends on the width of the right of way. If the right of way's only 30 feet wide, we're gonna cut to the fence, or as close as we can. If it's 60 foot wide, and we're talking another 14 to 18 feet off the edge of the travel surface, we're probably gonna cut within a few feet of it. We're probably not gonna cut all the way to it if it's on the edge of the right of way. And it's a 60 foot wide right of way.
So guess your fence is nearby.
So on the fence that you had us take down, what's the right of way on that fence?
What's the width of the right of way in that section of road?
Yeah.
60 feet.
Okay, was our fence within 60 feet?
Yes. It was within 30 foot of the center line of the road, which is half of that 60 foot right of way.
That was determined by.
And that was, we talked about this already, that was determined by the surveyor went out and identified.
Was it an actual survey?
Talking about a meets and minds survey?
No, you could tell me, you're the expert.
I'm not the expert, that's why I rely on the county surveyor. Who is the survey expert?
An actual survey that was done or was it?
It was a survey to locate the center line of the road.
What's your definition of survey? Take measure or?
Pardon.
What's the, what was, what did the survey entail?
The survey entails going out with a total station transit and measuring the center line of the road every 25 feet, take a shot. Then we bring that in, we put it on AutoCAD and develop a drawing that depicts the road as it exists, okay? And then if it's a 60 foot right of way, we do a 30 foot offset from that center line and that establishes the edge of the road.
That was not done on North Fork Lane, because what I would ask if the county surveyors officers told me that road had never been surveyed. There's no records.
Where's the documentation?
No, yeah, nobody's produced any records of these supposed two surveys that got done. So, you know, if you're gonna claim there was a survey, something has to be written down. In the enforcement file, in the citation that I handled for Mr. King, nobody wrote down one single measurement. There was not one measurement in any of the notes or any of the reports in that file. So, you know, part of what's happening here, I think, is, I think you have a lot of people here who would like to see the county take a step to meet us partway, and we're not hearing that tonight. We're hearing, we're hearing a lot of, this is our right of way, we're gonna enforce it however we want to. The fact is, what this really requires is a little bit of discretion and a little bit of common sense in the road department. This wasn't a problem before 2022.
Yeah, Mr. Ramondo, I have got to stop you because that is absolutely not true, what you just said. The whole purpose, the purpose of having this meeting here tonight.
Are you calling me a liar?
The whole purpose of this meeting here tonight.
Are you calling me a liar?
The whole.
You're calling me a liar. Do not call me a liar. You called me a liar. Do not call me a liar.
I am not calling you a liar.
You just said that I, what did I say?
What I said.
What did I say that wasn't true? What did I say that wasn't true?
We did not, I had, I did not come up here and say, we're enforcing that right of way. I did not say that.
That's what the roadmaster has said from.
You just sat back there and told me, you just sat back there and told me that I said that.
Are you hearing compromise from the commissioners? Are you hearing a hard line? Hard line! So, listen to, listen to your audience.
It's not a hard line.
Listen to your audience.
The documentation.
The reality is that we, we have an intention and a desire to ameliorate this process, to make it accommodate the needs of landowners. That's a primary, I mean, that's a primary objective. That's why we're even here tonight. If, listen, if we were gonna enforce, if we were going to enforce a hard line.
You have a yes or no question and you couldn't answer a yes or no question directly. Okay?
All right. Listen, I'm gonna, I'm gonna take the trajectory.
The real question is, why don't you just maintain the damn road and let everybody else?
Why is this not a problem?
The, I think that the best suggestion that came up here tonight was to impound some, some landowners to work through this process in a smaller format. Come up with a, a policy that really is agreeable and workable to everybody, or the, the greatest majority of people possible, so.
Let's start with new fences and renovating the existing.
Look, you know what? I'm really sorry that you people are all so upset and so envious. Listen, the reality is that, all right, this, this meeting is completely devolving back here and I don't, I don't even, you know, if you guys wanna have conversations, just take them outside, please. But my objective as the chair of the board of commissioners right now is to put in place a, a mod, to modify the existing policy, which I think was, was ill-advised. And I think that it leaves a lot of things unanswered and a lot of things unaddressed, okay? So my objective is to, is to modify that in a way that has taken into account consultation from concerned landowners who are involved and have a stake in this game. And let's come up with a reasonable solution. I did not take a hard line on enforcing the right of way. And nobody else has either. We've been, we've been conciliatory throughout this meeting about that's what our approach is gonna be, so.
I hear you. I would request that perhaps you, I would urge volunteers to be on this committee, like before the meeting ends. I think that the committee should have landowners, probably someone from the roadmaster's department.
Yeah.
Or possibly, and.
Yeah. Okay, so here's, here's what I'm gonna do, is, is there, just by a show of hands, is there anybody in this room who would be interested in serving with us on that committee to come up with a, with better policy? All right? Okay, good. So here's what I'm gonna ask, is those of you with your hands up, would you please send me an email? Would you please send me an email and say, I'm interested in being on that committee? And we will work out a plan to sit down and come up with a, with a modification of this policy that's workable to everyone, okay? You want my email address?
Let me use.
Or do you wanna go to the county website and find it? You can do it either way. I'll give you my email address.
Is there any way that we can waive the situation with this poor lady, person that's got a fence down? So that we're, we're, there's some kind of compromise here, because this, this, you've got very upset people here. And I don't know who, who started that whole permit for the fencing. Who did that? And how far has it gone?
I don't have the answer to that. Established in 1991.
They never enforced it, so that's, this is the problem.
That's a problem.
There needs to be some kind of if here on the county side. I mean, you do not want pitchforks. If, if, you don't want pitchforks, this has gotten pretty volatile, so, you know, if, if someone can call the county and say, I got down fences because I had a truck run through it or a, the wind torn, went down and, am I gonna have to pay this, this fee to, to put back my fence in the original spot? That is where you have to say, we will not enforce it at this time until we get done with this public comments and, and get this tax force. You have to, you have to do something that's going to appease your people because your people are upset.
people are upset.
Tinesse, let me tell you, there, we decided quite a while ago there was going to be no more enforcement until we got this issue worked out.
Those are lines, that's a difference. This is permits for down fences, for, for having trees down, for cars that have, how many times does a county come out and fix anything when we have cars that come off the road and we are...
And that, and that...
Poratorium, yes.
And that, that policy does really need to be revisited, and, and so that'll be part of this process. But as far as a waiver for a particular hard case situation, please reach out, please reach out. Call me, you know? If, if, if something like that has arisen, you know, that, that's what we're there for, is to serve, not, not to, not to create problems. Come on. Yes, sir. One more, and then we're going to wrap it.
My name is Jim Kelly, I live at the end of Norway Road. It's been my, our family for, since the late 1800s. And every fence and every telephone pole is in the right-of-way down there. And there's a couple of us here that mow, we take care of the fence line, and it's work, but if we move our fences more, and some of them do need repair, that's just more work for a couple of us that actually maintain the fence line, because the county doesn't do it. We do it, but it's, that's just what we've worked out.
Thank you. One more.
On the Kokeel River, there used to be tons of dairy horse down there.
Go ahead and use the mic, Mark, so everybody can agree on that.
Up and down the Kokeel Valley, the North Ang, South Ang lanes, there used to be tons of dairy. They're all, they're all gone now. There's a lot of these properties that have been inherited by people that don't, you, they just kind of live on it, they don't have a lot of cattle or anything, all these fences have just gone to hell. And that's what you've been dealing with, Paul. A lot of fences that are just laying there. People, yeah, so, that needs to be addressed. So, we got to come up with some idea to deal with that as well.
Yeah, that's right, that's a good point. Are you going to step in on the, on the committee so we can work this out? Because I'd love to have... Okay, that's right. Okay, well, folks, you know, I, I'd like to say that we came up with really brilliant things here tonight, but, listen, there was a lot of good input, a lot of good ideas, and we're, we've got some work yet to do before we can come up with the, with the answer, the solution that we wanted, that's going to be beneficial to everybody. But we're going to work on it, we're committed to it, and thank you for being here. Good night.